I'd like to call the August 25th, 2022 Peters Township Plan and Commission meeting in order. Seth, can we have a roll call, please?
Yeah. Mr. Smith is not here with us this evening. Mr. Carter Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Magreeno?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Ms. Corble?
Here.
And Mr. Celebis is not here tonight.
Can I get a motion to approve the July 14th meeting minutes, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the July 14th, 2022 meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seth, any reports and correspondence?
No.
Okay. No site whether subdivisions filed for review, correct?
We did get an application for Tom Robinson subdivision on Camp Lane that came into our offices yesterday. I have not had a chance to look at it. It may not come before planning commission except.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
No.
Any audience comments on items not on the agenda? Okay. We'll roll right into new business. Planning Commission's recommendation on the Springer subdivision plan, number one, Bevout Road.
Thomas and Chrissy Springer, who own both properties at 222 and 224 Bevout Road, are seeking township approval for a lot line shift between the two properties. These are existing lots that were created in 1994 as part of the Harlitt Plan of lots. One lot is about half of an acre in size and the larger of the two lots is just over three acres in size. The intent of the proposed subdivision plan is to shift two of the shared lot lines to make the smaller of the two lots slightly bigger, I think primarily to get a driveway which had existed on the larger two lots fully within the smaller of the two lots, which would be Lot 1R. This is somewhat of an interesting situation. When this initial plan was recorded in 1994, it was variance granted to allow for the lot to be created. At the time, there was a 100-foot lot width requirement along Bevout Road. That regulation is no longer in place in the Township zoning ordinance. So, you know, in theory, that variance is no longer applicable. But there are, there were conditions placed on the initial subdivision plan as part of that variance that, you know, still may have some merit today even though that restriction is no longer applicable. It's a very simple lot line shift. The lots maintain dimensional requirements. There would be an existing non-conforming structure in the front setback on Bevout Road, but that certainly wouldn't be the only property on Bevout Road where that's the case with these older structures. Staff is making a recommendation of approval for the Springer subdivision plan number one, subject to the two conditions in my staff report dated August 18th, with condition one having four separate links to be placed on the subdivision plan. Happy to answer any questions. We also have the owners represented if you have a seat.
Seth, question for you. So, the ZHB's decision?
Yes.
And I see one of the, the number one saying no further subdivision, lot number two can occur. But, so lot number two went from 3.192 acres to 3.048 acres. I guess they were probably envisioning rather than a simple reduction, a further subdivision of that?
I would agree with that. A separate lot to be created outside of one.
So Lot 3.
A Lot 3.
Something.
Correct. Yeah, I don't, I don't think the intent was to restrict any lot line shifts as long as they, you know, were still.
Keith, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
No. It's pretty simple. Commissioners, any comments on this?
Is there, what's the reason for not allowing, it's three acres, why is there no, no further subdivision of that?
This section of Bevout Road, I think there's, you know, it's a little bit tricky in terms of site distance and such. We do have a recommendation in here about head out egress onto Bevout Road. You know, we thought it was appropriate to maintain that previous restriction from council. It wasn't argued against at the time, so I think there was an intent at the time and we thought it'd be appropriate to carry that through as part of this.
And I'm not even sure myself on top of my head. What would be, so they were granted a variance on those two parcels?
Yep.
That run with that subdivided land.
Well, they run with the property.
With the property.
Yeah.
It's probably, so now, if that variance or need for variance was eliminated, you stated, correct?
That's correct.
So we're saying that arguably that those are no longer still on those subdivided plan? Would it still be there?
Yeah, it's a little interesting. I think ultimately what happened, though, is the subdivision plan was recorded with conditions.
Yes.
So, those conditions that were recorded on the subdivision plan.
Seem to still be there.
Seem to still be there.
As long as Keith, it doesn't bother you guys with these conditions.
Right. It's just that the actual variance itself.
Yeah, it's an interesting analysis, yeah.
It was a fun one to dive into.
Yeah.
I live just a little further down the street here. I'm at 176 Bevout. And when you come up along, you do hit where it winds and you have a lot of crests.
Some blind spots.
There's a decent number of blind spots and I kind of, you go around the corner and the, the speed limit goes up and down all over the place on that road, so I can see where.
This is where it goes from 25 to 40?
25 to 40 back again. And there's another, like, the one right next to me, I envisioned when they, they own Farback as well, and when they were trying to sell, they thought they would be able to, you know, do like a plan and put like five or six houses down there, and that got mixed. So I'm thinking this probably was a similar, you know, thought process back then, you know?
Any other comments? Any audience comments? If there are none, can I get a recommendation, please?
I'd like to make the motion that the Planning Commission recommend the Springer subdivision plan number one.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Keith. Next on the agenda is Planning Commission recommendation on the Camden Village preliminary slash final plan.
Benjamin Marcus Holmes, who is the owner of a just under two-acre parcel of land at 150 Quail Run Road, which is situated just at the entrance to the Quail Run neighborhood, right off the intersection of Sugar Camp Road and Quail Run Road, has acquired this property and, under the allotment and the requirements of the medium-density residential zoning district, is seeking township approval for a, you know, land development plan to construct 13 townhouses on this property. Under the medium-density residential zoning district, we are allowed to go through preliminary and final plan collectively. Considering this is relatively small project, we thought that was appropriate. We've been working with them through various revisions of this plan to ultimately get to this point where staff is comfortable making a recommendation to Planning Commission for both the preliminary and final plan at the same time, subject to ultimate approval by Township Council. This piece of property also has somewhat of an interest, interesting history. Before this section of the Township was serviced by the Peters Township Sanitary Authority, this acted as a sanitary facility for the Quail Run. Sanitary Authority. Sometime in late, you know, 2014, the structure of my property were removed and/or buried under the property and then it changed hands via tax sale. It was also acquired by Benjamin Marcus Holmes in 2021 when he approached us for potential development of the property. Like I said, it would be 13-unit townhouse development fully situated along a private driveway extension of Quail Run Road. So, these properties would have Quail Run addresses. There's a sufficient gap in there for new addressing for these lots along Quail Run. They would be serviced by their own individual cluster mailbox, but they're Quail Run addresses themselves. The four lots along Quail Run itself are rear entry units, driveway in the back, front door, sidewalk on the front. The other nine units situated in two separate blocks of townhouses would be front entry with the front door and the driveway fully located on the property, or on, at the front of the property. In terms of stormwater management, you see a proposed stormwater management facility serviced for the entire 13 townhouse units plus the new private driveway that would ultimately discharge into the small creek that runs along the western property line. You know, obviously collected and discharged at a controlled rate. And then that ultimately goes under Sugar Camp Road and then through the Sugar Brook development across the street. They are proposing a total of six parking spaces throughout the townhouse development, a couple around the cluster mailbox unit, and then additional ones at the end of the proposed private driveway around the cul-de-sac. We're seeing a relocation of an existing sanitary sewer line as part of this project with a small extension to service one of the blocks of units. Some buffering along both Quail Run Road, the northern property line, the property line buffer along Sugar Camp Road. And then the intent is to maintain the existing vegetation as best as possible along the western property line. There are some adjacent single-family homes off that property line. You know, we do our best we can to maintain that vegetation with these new developments, but if it needs to be supplemented in the future, staff is making a recommendation that we made a condition of their final plan approval that they would go in and supplement that buffer in the future. Geotechnical report has been provided by the Township and is currently under review by Gateway Engineers. I think there's been some back and forth on that. Before we go to council, we will ensure that this plan has final approval from Gateway Engineers before council even consider it, before we put it on the council agenda. We've been told by the developer that these homes will start, you know, somewhere around the $400,000 range, maybe a little bit more, starting off. And then another, you know, interesting little tidbit, you know, we are not able to charge traffic impact fees for these units. When we created our traffic impact fee service area, you have a maximum seven square mile service area you can create. What we did at the time is we established the northern and southern TSA, and then we went around and identified properties that we thought were already fully developed and we wouldn't need additional traffic impact fees for. At the time, this was not known to be a separate parcel of land that could be potentially developed on, and it just happened to wind up in a TSA-excluded area, so we are not able to amend it to charge traffic impact fees for these 13 units. I think we're thankful it's just 13 new units and not a big residential development. Staff is making recommendation of approval to Planning Commission tonight, subject to the 16 conditions listed in my August 19th, 2022 staff report. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions from the Planning Commission. Josh from Gateway Engineers is here to answer questions, and we have Mike Wetzel from Victor Wetzel Associates here on behalf of the applicant.
Can you put back up the, the map that shows where they're located from, you know, with the entrance show as well?
Back to the site map.
No, no, the one that'll show where they're, where they'll come into it.
Yeah, like the entrance.
Yeah, very good.
Yep.
Am I wrong, or does that entrance seem very, very close to where people are coming in and out of there?
It's, it is a little close.
That's really close, isn't it?
We have had, it was one of the initial points of conflict as part of this proposed development, so one of the first things we did was have our consultant traffic engineer, Mike Mudger, go out and take a look at it. He deemed this to be the best site distance location. You know, it's hard to look at these things 2D and think about 3D, but, you know, what would look like making sense would be teeing up a Sandpiper lane, but just to the north of that, there's a ridge that you can't see over if you're trying to make lookout left coming out of there. So, this is the prime location for ingress and egress for this development. You know, it's 13 units, and I don't think we expect a tremendous amount of traffic in and out of this private driveway. And it doesn't, it's not a sticking point for us at this point.
And I guess just, just my comments on just that, you know, when you come, you know, when you come in or out of there, Jim, there's, there's a lot of cars, I mean, because that is an additional, I'm not worried about the 13 units.
Sure.
I'm worried about the hundreds and stuff that are already there.
Coming in and out, right.
And there are a lot of cars that come in and out of there. And so you've got an immediate, somebody, you know, goes to come in there quickly, they're going to be slamming on their brakes if somebody is trying to come out. I mean, that, that concerns me. I don't, I, I get that we don't know where else you put it, but I don't know where we've, where we've seen where you have that, you know, the, the, the actual area where people come in and off of the main development itself, that you have a, basically a, you know, a cul-de-sac coming in and out of there. That seems really close to me.
Yeah, I will say Mike has looked at this extensively. You know, if he had an issue with that specifically, I think he would have raised that and we might have tried to potentially find a different location for it. You know, he has identified this as the best location, and that does not seem to be an issue for him at this point.
Yeah, along the same lines, I was thinking that, that curve could be widened so that it's almost like it hits the, the exit lane a little bit further down, so it's almost like a little bit more wider.
Almost like an off-ramp?
Almost like a ramp going into there, just to widen that, so when you're coming out of there, making the right, you're not fouling the oncoming traffic or, you know, you got a little bit more room.
It could almost be like a right in, right out if you extend the center of the island back, more of a teardrop approach, is what you're saying, Ted?
But, yeah. Yeah, across the street as well. Do you widen that, but I don't know if they have that up.
It's a very odd, it's a very odd geometry.
Was there any effort made to make it a four-way with Sand, oh, is that Sandpiper?
There was, yeah. Mike, go ahead.
Mike Wetzel with Victor Wetzel Associates. Once again, some of the site distance that occurred at that intersection really didn't make it safe to be able to look left, so that's why we had worked with staff in the very beginning of the whole process to determine the, the best location of that driveway. And where really where we are is you have that big island you have, people are already starting to slow down, whether, you know, because they know of the stop sign at the, at the intersection, but, once again, we've, we've worked extensively with staff as well as your traffic engineers to determine the best design layout for, and location for that property truck.
Now, the driveways, the driveways for, say, A, B, C, especially C, are they big enough for a car to park in bumper clear of the sidewalk?
Oh, yes. Yes, they are.
What's the depth of that from the sidewalk, back of sidewalk to the garage door?
I don't have that dimension in front of me, but that's something that's been reviewed by staff. I don't have that true dimension.
It looks less than 20 feet is my point.
I believe it's probably the right around, because that is a, a stepped version, especially received that's at the 20-foot location.
Or on Lot 2 specifically, I think that's a more substantial, or a shorter distance, you know, Lot 2, that it doesn't appear to be 20 feet when I look at the dimension of the carway.
Look, the reason.
No, because you probably have, at the red line, that's the, the center line, that's the 25-foot setback, that's a 25-foot line, so you still have another, I'd say, 14 feet from the red line that's, that's there from that section. So there's, there's where we have two cars.
Can I ask why the extra three parking spaces in this little cul-de-sac area, I mean, the rest of the development doesn't have them. They don't have parking spaces in each of the little cul-de-sacs. The only additional parking in Quail Run is right above the pool.
Yep.
So why, why use, I know it's not a lot of space, but I mean, why, why put them in there?
Well.
Because it's been identified as an issue?
It's been identified as something we try to get in all of our new developments. You know, we've recognized that especially this private driveway is going to have somewhat of a narrower, narrower cartway, so on-street parking could potentially be a challenge. So, we try to accommodate guest parking areas as best we can, and I think maybe our initial early conversations between the developer, and I think maybe even conversations with the HOA, they were concerned about, you know, parking vehicles, guests for these units, maybe unfortunately using parking spaces throughout the Quail Run development, so we tried to give them an opportunity to provide some additional guest parking as well.
Yeah, I believe under the zoning district, you're required to have a certain number of visitor parking spaces, and I believe that was five at this site.
Sure seems like a lot of stuff on less than two acres.
Yeah, I think the part, the, if the drawings are to scale, Mike, you're just using a quick piece of paper here, we don't have 20 feet from the back of sidewalk to the face of the garage door. So you're not going to be able to park a vehicle, the resident vehicle, in front of, on the driveway. So, these have internal garages, then?
Yes, they do.
Gotcha.
Two-car garage.
Two-car garages.
But I think that we've still always said, though, that we want the outside parking to be enough that you can park without it going into the sidewalk.
I would highly recommend that. The other possible option is that, since this isn't an HOA, if there's a covenants that would require their garage be free and clear of, you know, which is hard to enforce, but at least, I've seen that in other municipalities occur, the projects that you're going to use your garage for parking, which, you know, mine is not.
Right.
So, I think that could be something, especially with townhomes. We're going, this is going to be a parking issue, I'm already concerned, in my humble opinion. I'm already concerned about the access. It's, it's a lot to fit on a site. I think there's probably, probably a less efficient design where you don't get the yield that may alleviate some of these concerns, is my humble opinion at the moment.
Is there a reason why the Lot 3 aren't further back off the driveway?
Between site grading and utilities that are back along that you're there.
And Mike, I noticed that in the sanitary relocation, we had sanitary trunk lines within the breastwork of the pond. Right underneath of the embankment of the pond, we have sanitary sewer lines. Is that, is that I reading correctly?
Yeah, just, you correct, yes, right along that embankment, but not, not in the Eagle City retention.
But it's in, it's in the structural embankment.
As a consult, I think, yes.
Like, has the authority approved that relocation?
They've been, they, I don't know if they've approved it, but that's something they've reviewed in regards to the sanitary line, and as part of the conditions that Seth has put in, they have to approve the Peters Township Sanitary Authority's approval as part of the condition of the board.
Is that the grating pin, Wetzel? I just don't see any contours.
Yeah, there's contours around the pond itself.
I'm just, what I'm trying to look for specifically is if we have a sanitary, public sanitary sewer main running through the breastwork of a pond that's going to detain water that could, if there's a leak in the sanitary sewer, which is not always the case, that, generally that's frowned upon. So, that's what I'm kind of asking the question.
I mean, you are correct, Rocco, that's, that's the proposed design at this time. You know, we'll lean on the Peters Township Sanitary Authority if they're willing to accept that, part of their review with HRG.
We probably don't have a code restriction to that with respect to the pond. Peters Township's not going to own the pond. It's an HOA pond. It, we're getting all these things in concert. I mean, the homes look beautiful, it's just, we're seeing that it's a lot on a small lot, and that's why we have these overlapping issues, in my humble opinion.
And I have a concern with a lot of the wording, Seth.
These last three.
14, as much as is possible, 15, as much existing vegetation, 16, where feasible, just too ambiguous. It's like, you can or you can't, you know, sort of thing. It's just, I know this is just a preliminary plan, but you know, these, these variances.
Preliminary and final.
But, and final, huh?
So, in regard to some of those questions, you know, it's, as Seth pointed out, if, what staff is trying to do is protect the plant, if more landscaping, existing landscaping got removed during construction, staff has the ability to come back and say to the developer, put in more buffer planting. So they're adding those, especially items number 15 and 16, within the plan of, of, once again, making sure that the existing planting is protected, and if there's a reason or something that happened during the construction process, some vegetation got removed, we need to be able to put in more under, under the review of staff.
The problem with that, of course, and I had the same markings for those last three, the problem with that, of course, is that, you know, somebody makes a decision if those trees come down because it needs to be, or what's feasible, that's only on one end, and then whatever you're replacing it with is going to take 20 years to grow to the same size of what was already there. So I understand you could put in more buffer, I mean, more landscaping, but it's certainly not going to be apples to apples. So I mean, my point is, is I, I completely agree that, I mean, when you say as much as possible, that has, that has no legal, no legal, you can't enforce that, there's nothing you can do with that, you might as well not even put it in.
Well, you know, we, Rochelle, we don't have, unfortunately, specific ordinances that preclude them from putting manholes within sidewalks. Now, it's best design practice is to not have them there for the concern of the sidewalk in future, if anything needs to be done with those manholes. So, this is our way of doing, staff's best way of getting to a good design outside of what our ordinance, black and white, calls for. You know, we just, we can't tell them, no, it cannot be there, but we work with them and they're willing to work with us to come up with a good design to make this, to accomplish some of those things. In regard to the, it's the same thing with the landscaping, you know, this is a residential development up against a residential development, there's not a specific buffer requirement for that western buffer. I can't tell Mike that he has to put X tree and X bush and X tree a certain distance apart, so what I'm trying to accomplish is to keep that buffer as best we can, and we'll go above and beyond the ordinance, working with them to make sure that that buffer stays in place, but I can't tell him exactly what has to be there.
Well, but with, with this development or with the, with the HOA, are there not rules and requirements within the HOA that you guys are going to have to then basically be a part of and comply, like, whatever is within the existing HOA?
Well, we can't join the existing because this, just this is a completely separate parcel, so they'll have their own separate HOA.
They're entirely separate.
So these are not tied together at all?
Correct.
Do we have the applicant, do you have a traffic engineer that's reviewed this and has provided a recommendation, a sign, seal, the turning movements for the exit, or do you have a, a traffic engineer do that, or have you done that?
Well, we've, we've even supplied truck movements in and out, and fire truck movements in and out, plans associated with that. It's been reviewed by staff as well as the township.
I, I'm aware that, I'm very concerned about the entrance, so I'm aware that we've reviewed it, but want to make sure that some, a traffic engineer, and I know that we can have auto turn in trucks and make those movements work at a two mile per hour with a very limited lock angle, you can make, kind of get around almost anything. The question I have is, do you have a traffic engineer on your team that's signing and sealing on this, on this plan? So if there's an issue here, that it's going to be on that traffic engineer, or I propose, you know, whoever's signed off on the, on the site plan. It's just, that's very odd to me. It's a very odd entrance, and it's just, it's, it's going to be a challenge, I think, from a traffic perspective.
I wanted to ask too, so what, you said that the, the site distance was the issue with putting it across from Sandpiper.
Mm-hmm.
So is that, is that a site distance issue that's arisen since Sandpiper was in, or is it because, because obviously it's there across the road?
So, I think Sandpiper, because they're looking right, it's a different situation. This development, if it were to tee up with Sandpiper, you have to look left, which requires additional site distance, and there's a crest there.
An inside curve as well?
Right, and you're on, you're correct, thank you, Mike. You're on the inside of the bend, whereas Sandpiper is on the con cave portion of that bend.
And there's not a scenario where it could be turned into a stop sign, so, I mean, if you're to stop sign?
I don't think we have any, no intention of putting a stop sign coming down.
I'd love to see that.
You can say there's not an intention to, but is that a possibility?
Right, but they wouldn't meet the site distance requirements anyway, wouldn't it if it was there.
One quick note, I think those landscape trees are within the site distance line.
Yeah, and I think, I think Josh caught that on his last review letter.
We haven't known that they need to verify that upon construction, that there's potential one of those might need to be removed.
This, what you're looking at right now, Rocco, is actually revised landscape plan that came into me today, and I do notice that these green ones have been pushed back at least a little bit. I don't know if it's far enough yet, but they have been.
Or at the site distance.
Yeah, I think.
Site drivers.
That's one of the comments we have on our, on our letter to them.
And I guess I apologize if you guys already answered this, and there's a reason why if they couldn't have it come off of just, like, further up from 200 through 210, that wasn't a possibility?
It's, I think it's, it's a pretty steep grade getting up to the, further beyond units A, B, C, and D as part of Lot 2.
Topographically, I mean.
At the end of the cul-de-sac.
So I guess that's my question, is it just more difficult and more costly, or, or just won't work, to put it, to put it further up? Is it?
Just won't work. And once, we've had the township traffic engineer look at all scenarios along the frontage of the property.
Seth, what are the limits on the number of townhouses they could put here? Are they up against that, or do they have?
Maximum dwelling units per acre here, I believe, is seven units per acre.
And this is not an overlay, this is what this is on.
This is underlying zoning district, medium-density residential. We don't, we don't deal with this one very often.
Because it was part of Quail Run.
And I think there are some other areas in the township, I don't think it's solely Quail Run, but predominantly, they've, they've all been developed at this point.
Seth, you'll have to educate me a little bit on this or just confirm it, but I, I hear, you know, Mike saying that our traffic engineers reviewed it, we looked at, our traffic engineer identified the best location. I want to make sure that it's very clear that we're not dictating where this entrance goes, nor are we designing this entrance. This is the applicant-designed entrance, that they're under full responsibility for this entrance.
That's correct.
And although it's the quote-unquote "best" potential location, it may not, we're seeing issues with it, and it may not necessarily be run afoul of code, but it's still something we're identifying as a possible risk.
Yeah, I mean, our traffic search engineer certainly isn't taking the time to design intersections and entrances for them, but, you know, we work with them, it's an iterative process. He goes out, takes field visits with the applicant, they look at different locations, is this going to meet site distance? Is this going to meet site distance? And this was the one through that cooperative.
Just don't ever want to hear that, oh, the township made us put it here.
That's correct.
Right?
I mean, my only other, my other issue with where that comes in is that obviously right across the road from there is where that community pool is. There's already, I mean, there's, this area's not sidelocked. There's a lot of kids, you know, who walk down there all summer long to get into that pool area, just having again another intersection where cars are stopping and starting. It just seems unsafe to me.
Well, I don't think we would have, you know, Rochelle, I don't know if I would see much pedestrian activity at this exact entrance, because a lot of them would be going down Sandpiper access to the pool, if Mike.
Well, not all the people that are on Quail Run, on the main road here, that's how they all get down to the pool. That's how every single one of them go down there.
Right, but, you know, up in this area, they're well clear of that proposed entrance.
I'm sorry, up in this area?
Sorry, on the street.
So what they would be doing is coming down here to go this way and not coming at all within the intersection that would take place down through here. They're not walking down here to go to the pool.
Right, they go down Sandpiper.
They go down to Sandpiper. So they're never walking past our driveway access to get to the pool.
I'm just trying to figure when, we just, we had a townhouse in here, so I'm just trying to, someone walk down. It's just, it's a lot more, just with the starting and stopping, and cars backing up and they're waiting for something, I don't know, there's a lot of kids down there, and that's where the community pool is, so.
Mike, would you be open to, and Rochelle, I don't want to change the subject.
No.
Would you be open to putting in the HOA documents the restriction about the garages have to be used for vehicular parking?
Yes.
Would you be open to that?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we can't just require that all of the outside, you know, have to be at least 20 feet long?
I don't know that that is a code requirement at the moment.
That's not either. So what does that mean, when you, when you say that, what does that mean, use for? But that doesn't, so you can say like, oh, you're not using it for, you're using it to store.
If we get a call that there's excessive parking, you know, from residents, or we could at least say, look, your HOA has a provision that these cars should be parked within, inside the structure.
I mean, what you're saying, let me finish though, is that that doesn't mean that somebody can't use the driveway, unless, unless it's a, unless it's a statement, it's the opposite. You can say like, garages aren't to be used for parking cars, but unless you say driveways are not to be used for parking cars overnight, you can say like, well, yeah, I use my garage for two, and I put the other car in the fence box.
And I'm just throwing this out, would it be more effective to say in the documents that cars parked in driveways can't block the sidewalk?
It's not possible.
Did you say it's not possible?
I thought it was possible.
And that's on Lot Three only?
Well, look at, yeah, look at Lot Three. Look at that whole line there. And you say that there's a restriction behind Lot, behind the building in Lot Three?
I believe with some of the utilities are taken, brought back. Once again, we're here in some of these discussions for the first time.
That would just be addressing the gateways.
I kind of think this HOA amendment's not going to carry any teeth.
Got it.
Because who's going to enforce?
I'm not going to.
Yeah, he's not going to enforce any HOA.
I can't, I can't enforce private HOA restrictions.
I don't, I don't want this.
And I understand the point of it. But I get what you're saying.
I'm, I'm good either way.
I'd just push it all back.
I would be fine with that.
Yeah, I don't see enough room for a carload of extended cab.
Yeah.
No, no, absolutely not.
And frankly, you know, from the developer's standpoint, the not having a usable driveway, I think would hurt the selling of those units compared to the other ones.
You're right, but I mean, as far as who's going to figure out what's on, you know, nobody's going to say, you know.
Sure, buying stuff, it's not seen anymore.
Or nobody's going to say, this driveway's not really usable, so it's not going to come out.
Rocco and Mike.
Is there a sidewalk requirement for both sides?
No.
So that, could the sidewalk be put on the other side with the longer driveways, first off, to allow longer space without it, the driveway interrupting?
Yeah, the hope here, ten, is to give them sidewalk access to the cluster mailbox.
I got you.
Now, I will say, Mike, and we can certainly look at this, you know, the only real utility behind these, this block of units is the roof level.
We can look, once again, as I said, we will look at this when we're especially adjusting, doing the final work in regard to gateways, call that letter, see about adjusting that back area and moving those, that building, especially building three out.
What's the minimum building setback?
Twenty-five feet.
And that's from where?
Would be the edge of the right of way. With this being a private drive.
And the sidewalk is within the 25 feet setback?
It can be, yeah. I, looking at this utility plan, I think there's, there's probably room to push those back a little bit, so I would challenge Mike to, Chris, to take a look at that, yeah.
But that would be that we're going to push back?
Lot Three to provide for a 20-foot driveway.
Between the sidewalk and the building.
Is 20 feet our goal? Is that the goal? That our objective?
I mean, 23 is probably the minimum.
Yeah, we get it.
23 is the minimum, and that's based upon a Ford F-150. Without an extended cab. I know, because I've been standing in Mike's shoes before.
Those are all electric cars. What about the, that's a deep restriction to the.
Yes, in by townhome, you get it free.
You get a Toyota Camry.
Two smart cars, there you go.
And a bike.
So we're measuring about 18 feet right now, so I think.
Five, another five.
Probably, probably doable.
What's so thick? Eighteen, that's what. Looks a little bit worse than I guess.
How about all the other ones? They're all 23?
I think the only ones we might have that same challenge on are a couple of the units in Lot One. Same situation, there's a roof lateral back there. We are faced with a buffer off of Sugar Camp Road that we do need to stay out of with structures, but I think that predominantly exists along the lots, along the back of the lots, because they're kind of at an angle that aren't as challenged.
And just to help Mike out a little bit, I don't necessarily mind if we don't have the grass strip, you know, if the sidewalk moves closer to the, at the curb.
Kind of more of a, yeah.
Splitting it back to the curb.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to get, you're going to get, the two foot sidewalk.
Those are nobody's lands anyways.
Right.
And that's, that's starting to work to a good solution that we look at.
They've not given us, you know, there's not sufficient enough green space there for true landscaping.
Yeah, if you just get little pockets that are really happy.
And then you're going to get grass that gets run over as people short turn into their driveway.
So just butt the sidewalk against the wench curb and just start right away?
Gives you a couple of feet.
It'll give you two.
Probably give you two or three feet to start with.
So three in the back, two in the front, you're right about there.
Is the goal of the sidewalk those, to make it a little further away from where the cars are driving down the road?
Traditionally speaking, yeah, I mean, that's the goal during, on larger developments. I would not be as concerned about that here, you know, I think we've got far less traffic, cars not moving very quickly from their unit out to the entrance.
Always takes one car though. I mean, if the purpose of the sidewalk, because if, if that's not the purpose, then the kids could walk driveway to driveway, or people could walk driveway to driveway. I mean, if the purpose of the sidewalk is to set it back from the road a little bit to give people walking, you know, space along there, dogs, and they're driving, then I don't know that it serves the same purpose if you're going to butt it right against the road.
We find it amazing, we go to some of our developments, more people will really still walk the road than your sidewalks.
They do, but they, but some people don't.
But we're not saying not to have a sidewalk at all, but moving that sidewalk to the back of the curb kind of serves two units, you're still, two items, you're still providing that sidewalk, but you're also providing that more space that we seem to be wanting to make sure that we're not blocking the sidewalk with vehicles.
And it is a five-foot wide sidewalk, which is a pretty decent sized sidewalk.
I think you could get the five feet, just moving the building back and leaving the sidewalk as it is.
Yeah, I don't think that should be the first solution. I think it must be, I don't think it should be the first solution.
I'm kind of agreeing with that.
At any rate, all the units shall provide at least 23 feet from the back of sidewalk to the front of the garage door. Is that correct?
Yeah, give me a second here, Rocco.
Yep. With the, we say the building face, not take the 10 inches, right?
And that's the rest of these conditions, all 16 of them, I mean, we have, some of them say shall, some of them, so when you shall, then they all, then the ones where we're saying that it's required, they all should say shall. So seven, you know, I actually, they all should have the word shall in front of the execute, so there's no, there's no question.
The problem. I see that on seven, Rochelle.
Should you put shall in places should, you know, should that be shall?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, which one?
Fourteen. I mean, I think, I mean, if it were me, it would be the developer, shall execute, shall execute, shall be received.
I've got it on seven and fourteen.
I mean, even with that fourteen, and I understand what you're saying, is that, you know, is that we don't have, we don't have the, we're not allowed to require it. And isn't there a better way to say those, to the extent that a stormwater or sanitary sewer manhole must be located within the proposed sidewalks, developer shall, you know, give notice or have somebody have to come out and show them where and why? Just the as much as possible language, just if we're saying that, can we just turn it and say, you know, to the extent that stormwater must be located within the proposed sidewalks, developer shall notify the township?
But must is a requirement that we're not allowed to have manholes into there.
No, it's not.
We're, we're trying to work as best as possible not to put that.
No, no, I'm saying, to the extent that you find out that you can't avoid it, right, then, you know.
So Josh is looking through our utility plan right now. There's none currently.
Okay, so if they wanted to add one, they would have to?
Yeah, I guess is the, my thought is, as we move towards the final, final design, if something were to get shifted for any reason whatsoever, we move those outside of the sidewalk. Mike, since there's none shown now, do we have an issue with fourteen just saying, no stormwater or sanitary sewer manhole shall be located within the proposed sidewalks?
Sure.
I'll go with that. So are we, you okay with that, Rochelle? Yeah, just, let's just, let's just take out the ambiguity.
And when you're saying that shall be supplemented with additional landscape planting if needed, is there something where the landscape plantings that they would put in have to be approved, or what, you know, so that you guys have some say?
Yeah, we did this.
What is planted?
So we did this on the revised site plan for 1781 Club, and if my memory is certainly correct, we phrase that to the satisfaction of the township. I mean, you know, they have landscape architects on staff, I don't mind saying something, you know, to be approved by or.
Just that you know what's going in.
Chosen and planted by, or chosen by a licensed landscape architect.
Yeah, and again, just also for your protection as well, that, you know, something is planted in there, it's put in, you guys have never seen it, people come in and they're upset about it, at least, you know, again, will keep you from having somebody come up to you as well, so that, just if, if something has to be put in.
And they could be saying to meet typical standard, yard planting heights and sizing. So we just can't come in and put a two-inch, two-foot evergreen tree, but it would meet, you know, you normally have a buffer yard requirement that says you must put in a six foot evergreen. We would follow the requirements of the buffer yard standards.
I mean, I'd take out the words if needed and say, but shall be supplemented with additional landscape plate, but.
They meet the standards.
How about just existing vegetation, just take out as much, existing vegetation within the proposed buffer along the western property line shall be maintained, come up to the extent is renewed, shall be supplemented or replaced with additional landscape planting, and then whatever language you were talking about.
Josh, I can't find the invert on the pond outlet. Usually make sure that that sanitary sewer's not the breastwork. I think it's not. It looks at the profile on D 6.1, it would be way below it, but I can't see the depth from backside.
Yeah, I'll check that. I believe that embankment is on, totally on fill, it's not cutting, the top of the pond is cutting the red hill.
Any other questions? Any audience comments on this? Please come up, introduce yourself.
Write your name for me, on this, name and address on the sheet there. Thank you.
My name's Bob Ralston, I'm the property manager of the Well Run Condominium Association, and we obviously have a very interest in this project, and I appreciate all the comments that the commission has provided so far, because it's a lot of the same concerns that we have, being the neighbor to the new development. One thing, first thing that we're concerned about in relation, kind of in relation to what the commission was talking about in terms of site distance, the Quail Run Route, as somebody stated, that he stated, is, has a lot of traffic on it for residential street. We have 330 units in the community, 30 homes at the top of the hill, plus we're becoming a pass through for people going from Brush Run Road to Sugar Camp Road. So if you're going from the southern part of Bethel Park to Trax Farms, a lot of that traffic coming through our unit. So we get a pretty good bit of traffic coming through for residential street township. And in 2012, we petitioned the township council to put a no parking restriction from Sandpiper Lane all the way up to Scott Lane. And the reason for that was, is the crest curve that was discussed before, this curve right here has very poor site distance on it. And cars were parking along this side of the street, and what's happening was, cars coming up here, had to go into the left lane, opposing lane to get around it, and traffic coming this way, can't see it. We had a lot of near misses, so we petitioned the council in 2012, we got the no parking installed in 2013. Our concern now is, is that with this lot number two, this sidewalks here, and how the doors face this street, there's going to be a lot of long-street parking on this side. It's going to be easier for people to park here, guests to park here, visitors, even people who don't want to park back here, walk up the steps, they're going to want to park on that street. It's going to be, it's going to be an unsafe condition. There can be a lot of people that are going to be coming around here, trying to get around people that are coming up here, people coming over this hill that aren't going to see people park here. We feel it can recreate a similar condition to what we petitioned the council for back in 2012 and 2013.
We have another question, following up on that point, Seth, is there any reason we just can't keep that saying, no parking?
Well, the no parking would have to be put on the other side of the street. Right now, it's one side.
It's just facing that, along the crest.
Concerned back then, I'm sorry, I just wanted to know.
That's quite all right. I think that's a very, it's a very good point to be made, especially because, you know, if there's a car at the top of that crested curve, it's really going to impact your site distance seeing through there. I'll, we'll, I'll take a look at that with Mike Mudry, our traffic engineer, and if he thinks it's appropriate to do no parking along that section as well, you know, we can probably implement that as part of this lane development, just have to put those no parks on. We'll, we'll take a good look at that.
You're saying that the no parking would just start at the, at the part of this development and then?
Yeah, it might start, it might, it might start around like the, you know, the top of that crested curve and then down towards the entrance.
We would, if we were petitioning the council, we would petition at the start at 221 Quail Run, that's the first building up Quail Run, that's, that's back from.
All the way back, right, yeah.
Is that on the same side as this new development?
The no parking, right now, it's on the opposite.
Opposite side, but you're talking about the same side from that building all the way down to the exit.
We would, we would petition that we would put on the other side too, because it wasn't a concern back in 2012, because there was no development on this side. So we don't get, there's very little parking that is on the other side right now. But with the new development, we certainly think that it's going to, it's going to increase there, especially the way the doors come to the street, the entry doors to the street.
How wide, how wide is the road right there, Seth? It's under 50 foot?
In terms of the right-of-way?
Or just like the, I'm not sure, what's the name of the road?
The actual cartway?
Yeah.
Quail Run Route? I don't have that registered, let me check here. 22, 24 feet, something like that.
Oh, wow.
That's two, that's two.
Yeah, back to.
I could definitely see an Amazon truck.
What's the, what's the speed limit supposed to be?
25.
25.
Yes, it can get a little dicey in the entrance there.
I would add that that. I, I would add that that, on that side, it should say, no parking or stopping, because I can definitely see Amazon delivery guys dropping off stuff right there.
20 foot, 24 feet curb to curb, 21 foot cartway and a 50 foot right-of-way.
21 foot, typically 24.
Yeah, 24 with the curb. Yeah, Ted, I, to echo that, I think I would entertain maybe an additional condition, number 18, that the township traffic engineer look at the potential need for no parking or stopping signs along the Quail Run frontage of the proposed development to prevent on-street parking. Mike? I think that's probably a reasonable look.
Yes.
Good, sir, continue.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you for that. Our second concern, and it has been discussed already by the commission, is the size of the driveways, and we appreciate that. One other point that I'd like to bring up, our concern is with the lanes. Now, our, our concern in this is, is that what cannot be parked in the new community will end up in our community. We have, we have a parking lot for our swimming pool that's right along Sand Piper Lane, it can park about 10 cars, or even parking along Sand Piper Lane, we're worried that that's going to spill over into our community if the parking's not right. So we appreciate the discussion on the lanes so that we get as many cars in the driveway. We're also, I, I would propose to the council, the proposed width is 17 foot for driveways, so we could at least make it 18 feet, because the standard parking space for, for a commercial property is nine foot width. So assuming that an average car is nine foot width, 20 foot length, you know, we can make an 18 foot width on the driveways with, with that requirement that you put in earlier for the lane in the driveways. So we can ensure that there's two cars per, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I remember to do, I apologize. In Quail Run, and you guys don't have cars stickered or anything, right? Cars don't have to have like a sticker that you know they, so.
Correct.
So unless we ensure that there's parking for those cars, there's no way to know that cars in this development are now parking.
Unless they're driving down and parking there.
Yeah, but I mean, like I said, it was going to, but there's no.
If we have, if we have a problem, we would have to start putting a parking restriction and start contracting with tow companies, something along those lines. We'd rather not have to do that, just.
But that's all private parking, private owned by the HOA or?
The, the parking along the pool.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's not like Quail Run has it telling you there's a parking, like the people live there.
Gotcha, so this, this having the visit parking here is good then?
Yeah.
We have a lot of single driveways such as this, and they're long driveways, so the average single driveway we have, we fit at least three cars in it.
Wow.
And in the buildings that have common driveways, they each have at least one space going into their garage, and if they have extra cars they park, there's usually a, a space along the backside of the common driveway. So we typically don't run into parking problems so much, but we've got a lot of space on driveways here, so.
Because if you just say, for like, so when you go down Quail Run and then you have the ones that come off the sides, you guys see, some will be the garage and then there's a, there's the driveway, but then the common driveway one, that is actually very wide, and you can park cars all on each side of it, and then two cars can still get, get past each other, and you're like on the, on the, on the branches that come off of there.
So, yes, our question was, if, if there could be.
Right now it's 17, you're saying?
Yes, listed as 17. One of the drawings that I have on the website listed the drawing is at 17 foot, so I assume that was a typical width.
Does it pause at the size of a garage door?
That's a typical driveway.
17?
For a two-car garage.
Okay.
Can you park two cars side by side? No?
Okay. Anything else, sir?
Sure. The, what we would also like to ask for is, I'm sorry, because you covered a lot of these points, I'm just trying to. The spaces, the, the three spaces that are provided in parking areas, is it possible for the township to provide with the approval that those spaces remain parking spaces? Our association could see those spaces being used as a few, by future HOA, as dumping mulch, dumping dirt, dumping gravel, parking an RV, you know, taking up all three spaces or, you know, something along those lines. So it looks all nice now with the extra spaces, but we're concerned about what that's going to look like five years from now, 10 years from now.
Seth, isn't there a requirement to have these parking spaces? Are we, there's?
It's required to have five parking spaces.
Yeah. So it's not like, I'm sure your HOA is not going to let anybody park RVs anywhere.
Correct.
Yeah.
Ideas to have those visits with parking spaces? Our concern is even future maintenance, because landscaping's done, we do landscaping on our property all the time, we have places, we have a large property to do that on, so we have places to dump the dirt, dump the mulch. So they get a truckload of mulch, truckload of dirt, the spaces disappear, even if it's for three weeks or something along those lines. Again, that parking can be spilling into our property. We're just looking to see if there's something that can be put on in addition at this point to make sure that those remain parking in the future.
You want the HOA to say that those five parking spaces must remain unobstructed?
Well, the point, the point was brought up earlier is, and it's correct, is the township has no say on that. Maybe if the HOA puts it in their provisions, you know, that's up to them to enforce it.
But what I, but what the township can control is the requirement for off-street parking spaces. So if they're, if they're a requirement of the township, they need to be maintained as off-street parking spaces in perpetuity, because it is a requirement of the township's zoning order, it's not the time of the approved. It's not like they can just go in and decide not to have them anymore. So they, they need to be maintained as parking spaces.
So this is a point then, that if, if, if it, you know, goes down the road?
It would be an issue that we could.
No longer parking spaces, then the, then the Quail Run Association can come to the township and say those spaces are being, it's a violation.
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it's, it's, it would, you know, it doesn't even need to be made a special condition, it's zoning ordinance regulation, right?
Okay, so we have assurance then that they will only remain?
Yes.
Okay. And the last two concerns that I have, one pertains to the green space, that's something that's been discussed. My concern, the association's concern was, the way this is shown, because there was a drawing, I could refer to the one that was on the website, but I know some of these drawings are different than what we saw on the website.
What are you looking for, Bob?
This one.
I didn't grab all of them from my presentation.
This is the one that I had like glance, this is what I was going by, so there's that landscape on.
Yeah, my point earlier was, this is a revised version of that, of this drawing. Yeah.
Is it on the north side, up the north side?
Yeah, give me just a second, Bob. Yep, there it is.
Okay.
There's that buffer yard along the northern frontage.
Now, our, our concern is, we have a building, our building is, first building is pretty much right here. This is shown as 17 trees and 34 shrubs, but this is a two-to-one slope right here. I'm assuming it's a two-to-one slope, cup slope here. So our question was, how, if these trees and these shrubs are all going to be planted on a steep slope to separate, you know, provide barrier between the properties? It's, it, it looks nice on the paper, but we're not sure if that can be done in reality the way it's shown on the paper.
It could be done in reality.
Plant trees on the, is it?
Correct.
That is two-to-one slope that's shown in?
Yes.
Okay. You're saying that the trees can be planted there, maintained?
Yep.
And also? Okay. That's our question to the council too, is whether, you know, if all that's shown and it's on a steep slope, is that a concern to us? That, that can really be done.
Is a buffer required between two residential areas like that?
No.
Okay.
It's not required. But they've gone above and beyond what the ordinance can require, and they've proposed a buffer yard there.
Okay.
No, we, we do not require specific buffer yard standards between two residential developments. Typically what we see here for larger developments is open space gets allocated to the perimeter of the development and acts as a buffer, but.
Can I ask them what, because I'm still, I, I understand it's not a requirement and it doesn't need to be there, but we're showing this, and it's on the website, and it's being advertised by our association that this is going to be there. Can I ask how, what kind of plantings or what, what's going to be on there? How can we?
No, all the plants are listed in the placards right there.
And you're saying that that can be, all that two-to-one slope that can only be maintained by future HOA and?
Yeah, and technically, once again, we're not required to even plant it.
Right.
So if you're worried about it dying, and it's being too steep, we'll just take it out, but we feel it's a benefit to your residents as well as our residents to provide that buffer.
Okay.
But to be clear, once it passes and then it's agreed to and then it's all, they can change their mind and not put it in. So whatever it has passed, if it's passed with them showing on there, they can't then change their mind and decide not to do it.
So it is, it is, what is shown then has to be met, so.
Once you get to find, people, not, not today, but once ever it's passed.
This is a, uh, counsel.
Now, this is a recommendation here.
Right, I understand that. When I heard, when I heard a discussion earlier about, you know, this can't isn't a requirement by the township code, which I, I'm going to talk to my council member, because I really think it should be, you know, between developments like this, I understand it's unusual that this has happened, but between two developments, if there should be a buffer. But.
Which is why we're required to have.
I can come back then, if, if this isn't carried out, and come to the township and say, this is what was on this plan, but the final plan is approved by, by the council, and then this is, this has waited.
Whatever's.
This has waited. We will see 34 trees, there's 17 trees and 34 shrubs there.
If that's what's finally approved.
Right, right.
Whatever's finally approved.
And our last, well, one question I have, the, our, our concern with the drawings, with contouring is shown through buildings and such, but, you know, if the proposed contour shown through the buildings, we weren't sure how that was all going to look, but the commission has no issues with that. And our final concern about the sewer line, that being, that being done correctly, and our, our concern is, we're up line from all this, so if it's not done properly, if there's any future problems, we're the ones that are going to pay the price for it, because we've got everything up line from. And I know that there's been problems with that sewer line in the past, I also know that there, there is an old sewer plant underneath all this, so that's not really directly of our concern, but, you know, that's, just to bring that to the council's attention too, if that is any, or if the commission's concerned that it's a barrier, that this is, especially on lot number one, there is a sewer plant there.
Seth, would you take that concern then, as directly to?
Sanitary authority.
The sanitary authority?
Yeah, I mean, Bob and I spoke a little bit before the meeting, you know, the sanitary authority, HRT, their consulting engineer, they look at the plans, they approve the plans, they're out there during construction, whatever relocation needs to take place, they have the final say on the quality of that construction. I, I would have no concerns about that ultimately done, only because I know that the sanitary authority is out there looking at it heavily and ensuring that it's done the right.
Oh, no, no, I'm just saying that if you, I just want to make it clear that if you have concerns, that's who you would take that to.
Peters Towns, Senator.
And we don't, you know.
Contact them.
Contact them, we never mind helping you coordinate with them, that's, that's not an issue for us either, so.
Okay, so I'll just contact them directly about that.
I just wanted you to know who had the authorities or what.
I, I would comment that it would be who them to do it right, because all the stuff from uphill is going to end up downhill, which is where they are, so.
Yeah, but if there's a break in the line, it's going to be in the middle.
So they're going to, they're going to make sure that it's right.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you, appreciate it. Appreciate you listening.
Any other audience comments? Do we have all the additional items we can, all of those changes?
I think I.
You got, you got a 17, is there?
I got 17 and 18.
That's what I have, Rocco. And a couple shaws and a change to 15.
Okay.
Sorry, 16.
Do we want to, Rocco, you want to make a motion, since you have those?
Sure. Seth, I didn't capture the change to 16?
15, I apologize, it was 15.
Or 15?
I, I had written, per Rochelle's comments, this, to reword, comment 15 to write, existing vegetation within the proposed buffer along the western property line shall be maintained, comma, to the extent it is removed, but to the extent it is removed, it shall be supplemented with additional landscape plantings to the standard buffer yard requirements.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend preliminary and final approval of the Camden Village Plan in accordance with those 16 memo, 16 conditions identified in staff's memo of August 19th, 2022. In addition to item number 15, as recently read by Seth, the adjustments to condition seven and 14, implementing the word shall, condition 17, that the units, that all units provide a minimum 23 feet from the back of sidewalk to the face of the building, and additional condition 18, that the township traffic engineer review the possibility of a parking restriction on the development side of Quail Run.
The only addition I would have to that, Rocco, is on 14, we took out the first as much as is possible, just starting 14 with no stormwater.
And 14 is amended by Seth.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, no.
No?
No.
Okay. Three, two, in favor, with those conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. What's the timing on that after approval? Destruction on this?
Uh, we're going through MDS right now, we're going to probably, I don't know when officially we'll be able to start construction, but as soon as we get all of our third-party versions.
Okay. Thank you. So now we're up to the planning portion. Rocco, you want to?
Sure. Over the past few months, this commission has seen several plans come forward, both in preliminary and sketch format, and a lot of those were with regards to the conservation residential overlay and the mixed residential overlay, mixed-use residential overlay, I believe it was, and we're suggesting or requesting, I'd like to make a motion that the, that we request the council reconsider the conservation residential overlay district and the mixed residential overlay district, including but not limited to those dimensional requirements, locations and properties that are currently included within those overlay districts.
I hear you, Rocco, just give me two seconds here to make sure I get that clearly.
As in for a motion?
Correction.
Yes. Bob, was that before discussion?
You want a second?
Then, then you can discuss.
Okay, second, by Mr. Wyler. And Seth, you want to, well, Rocco, to restate that again, or do you think you want to restate it to us?
I will restate it back to you, if that's quite all right. Recommendation from Planning Commission to Township Council that they reconsider the conservation residential and mixed residential overlays in regard to the dimensional requirements, location and/or properties within the overlays.
I would say, including but not limited to dimensional requirements, locations and properties.
And I, I agree with Mr. Mangreno, I think the intent of those overlay districts and what we're seeing by current developers is not what is the original intent. The intent was, there was an overriding interest to help the seniors and elderly Peters Township residents to move to carriage homes and, and provide for, of that nature, as well as taking certain properties that were very hard to develop. Instead, we're seeing developers now jam smaller and smaller, create smaller lots, jam more houses in, that seem to be some of the best properties in this township. And we, as a commission and as council, has, can't really do anything about it, because we're governed by these overlay districts. I, I think it'd be great, we're seeing a lot of community outcry over the fact that we're cramming too many things, houses on smaller lots, and getting away from the traditional half-acre Peters Township lot. And I strongly would recommend for council to consider removing it and going back certain ways to what we had before and, and looking at, you know, those changes.
I have a motion from Rocco, second from Dave, commentary, Ben Sturman. Do we have a vote?
Any, any other thoughts? Do you want to have a roll call, or do you want to say anything?
I mean, the, the, I agree with what you're saying, is some of the developments that, what I understood to be land that needed help by overlaying another district set of rules that would allow for smaller lots, but, and, and I was thinking that those homes, like you said, would be for people who didn't want to move out of the township, and, but what we have seen is homes that are just as large as what they would be on larger lots, and they're just taking up the entire lot almost, and you barely have enough room to walk around them, and they're extremely high-priced for. And they're extremely high-priced for a resident to have a, a small lot with a huge house and a driveway with a car that sticks into the sidewalk. And, you know, I don't know that that's really what the intention was going in. And I think also that plan was the 2022 plan that we worked on in 2013 or something like that, or went through in 10 years ago. And maybe it's time to revisit that plan and, and say what we, what was in there that worked and what was in there that didn't work and reevaluate and say, okay, now we know what that looks like. What, what happened was it established a set of rules for developers and if you put a challenge or a set of rules in front of someone, they're gonna max out what the rules are and go toward it. And like you said, our hands are tied because that's the rule in place. And if someone plays by those rules and figures out how to put a maximum number of units on that land, fulfilling, fulfilling all those requirements, we have nothing to say. And, you know, maybe we, maybe those rules were a little bit too, you know, not, that were, did not really capture the intent of why that whole set was put together.
And the conservation district in specifically is not soliciting the type of plans we're looking for, consolidated development to minimize grading, to conserve those open space areas. It seems that we're still contemplating designs that the open space is a ribbon around the overall development. Stormwater ponds are put in areas that may not necessarily be the most appropriate for conservation. It's, it just seems that we're, we haven't achieved what we intended to set out to do with those ordinances. And that's what we'd like, I suggest we take a peek at those and, and consider an adjustment.
I'd just say that I think regardless of whether, you know, particular developments or what we're seeing specifically, I think that as a township that's growing and changing, every nine to 10 years, it should be without saying that we go back and we look and we see what needs changed and what needs updated. A decade is a long time. So I don't, I don't think it should be a response to anything in particular, but I think that as a, as a, as a community, these things need to be looked at with, with a good frequency. And I think certainly 10 years is a time to revisit this.
I think a lot of the trouble too is when we were having public hearings about this, no one showed up and said anything about it. So we kinda like, we kept on going. And a lot of the ground that's under the overlays is still good enough ground to have half-acre lots without the detriment to the environment or the, the developer themselves.
So hearing that, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Wiley. Can I get a roll call, please? Seth?
Mr. Carter Phyllis?
Yes, I, I, do you want me to say yes or no if I agree with it or?
Yes, yes or no?
Yeah, yes.
Aye.
Mr. Regreno?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Mr. Wiley?
Yay.
Mrs. Quaube?
Aye.
Okay, drive to nothing. We will make sure that gets in front of council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Seth?
Yes, you know, it's August 25th. Our next scheduled planning commission meeting is two weeks from today. We've got a couple of projects in the queue that I, I don't think are gonna have enough time to get in front of planning commission. It's just such a quick turnaround. So Ed and I were interested to gauge your interest in potentially pushing that back just one week to September the 15th. And then we would be right back on track for a regular meeting in October. So, so am I agreeable with everyone?
I may be out of town on September 15th, but.
I have to confirm my schedule.
Okay. Nothing set in stone tonight. I can certainly send down.
Or you can even look at, but it might create the same problem again, like going the fourth Thursday. Could you go?
We don't have to do a Thursday. I mean, we can figure out a different time, but.
You'll just have to advertise regardless, I guess.
I think if we move it one week only, we'll have the opportunity to catch up on the next one without having to keep on.
I just don't know if I can make it.
Domino effect of.
And I'm out of town as well, so not that, not that it matters.
I understand.
And then, yeah, we'll have to see with Conrad.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Get your numbers. Okay.
Why don't you just have Becky send it out?
Yeah.
See if we can make it.
Yep. Okay.
All right. Meeting adjourned.